Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council work session on January 23rd, to note that all council members are present here tonight. And I also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Niskali Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. And with that, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. And first up on our agenda is our Planning Commission work plan. And I see our Planning Commission's here, but let's go around and do some introductions. We'll start with Mike.
Michael Stedman, council member.
Jeff Gadman, Chair of the Planning Commission.
Carolyn Cox, council member.
Tanya Moore, Planning Commission.
Lenny Greenstein, council.
Ryan Andrews, Planning Manager and Staff to the Planning Commission.
Rick Wach, City Manager. About done at the end?
Yep.
Gail?
Yeah, man.
Sorry.
Elliot Kirk, City Planning.
Judy Doyle, Planning Commission.
Nick Dunning, council.
Keryen McMichael, Planning Commissioner.
Robin Vasquez, council.
Malcolm Miller, Deputy Mayor.
And I'm Andy Reiter, the Mayor of Lacey. And let's just go right into our first agenda and we'll turn it over to Grant, Ryan, and Jeff.
Great. So, thanks. I'll lead the presentation and then turn it over to maybe the Chair for any additional comments and then some questions from the council. So, good evening, everybody. Thanks. So, just a short presentation on the Planning Commission work program, which you all have a copy of in front of you tonight. One of the things I want to mention at the onset is that this is a unique work program. Typically, our work program is an annual work program. This time, we're actually requesting that the council approve a two-year work program. The reason being is that we have a large comprehensive plan update that's required to be completed in 2025, and it'll take us all of 2024 and the bulk of 2025 to get through that work. And most of the work that we do have to do is actually mandated by the state to be able to do that. So, all that to say, I don't think there's a lot of wiggle room in the work program. A lot of it is kind of set because of this comprehensive plan update process, and we're requesting this time that it be two years, given the work that's in front of us. So what makes up that comprehensive plan update is kind of on the screen here. So I'll touch a little bit about each one of these things, about our engagement and outreach strategy, and then the various different elements that will need to be essentially updated as we go through the process. So our land use, transportation, environment, economic development, housing, utilities, and then those other plans that are required by the GMA and other state requirements, like our transportation improvement program. I will mention that we did receive, over, the city has received over $600,000 in grants to receive this, or to complete this work, that those grants will pay for some of the staff time to complete this, as well as some consultant help that we'll need to complete the work as well. So start on the engagement and outreach strategy. I have some kind of visuals here from the last time we did this. This was our Envision Lacey Outreach Project that was done as part of our last comprehensive plan update. So we started, I think it was in 2013. It concluded in 2016 with the update of our comprehensive plan. So, as you can see, we did a variety of different events, and those videos, we were at here in City Hall, open houses. We took the Planning Commission on the road and actually did several Planning Commission meetings out in the community. I think we did three of them, one here in the city limits, and then two in the urban growth area to get additional feedback. We went out to the community. We were at the COPS Cars and Kids Program. We were at the Military Support Day at Cabela's, which unfortunately doesn't exist anymore. And then we did a lot of speaking bureau type events. You can see on the upper right there, me talking with Paul Enz, a former Planning Commission Chair on PCTV. So, we, you know, anybody that would hear from us, we talk to them. But this time, I think, we're looking to be a little bit different, a little bit more outside of the box. Last time, you know, we had a, we had difficulty engaging people. We had, really had to go to where they were. So, you know, this is obviously looking at, you know, broad stakeholder engagement, where this is something that we're going to have a consultant help us with. So the consultant is actually going to be doing the branding work, doing an engagement plan for us, and then actually assembling the final document, which may actually be, certainly will be more web-based than it is now, but it may even be a website, fully website-based comprehensive plan. We're kind of talking to them about that right now. So, it seems to be kind of the wave of the future is to make the comprehensive plan way more interactive than it is now. Plans are to kick off this engagement with, at the end of next month, a visioning session with the City Council. So, you know, we want to set the tone and engage the council in this and make this not only the community's comprehensive plan, but all of our comprehensive plans, and that includes the council. So we'll kick this off at the end of February with some visioning sessions with the council that should then lead into our broad stakeholder engagement, which will also include our boards and commissions. So, our envisioning is that we'll use a commission of commissions. So we're actually going to take and put together members from the Commission on Equity, Planning Commission, Historic Board, Parks Board, and others, the Youth Council as well, to have kind of a steering community that will lead us through this. I do want to mention there are two state requirements now that we're required to reach out to. One of them is to engage the, or participation of vulnerable populations and overburdened communities. And then the second is actually required now, collaboration and participation of Native American tribes in the planning process. Brings us to the land use element. So, I'll say pretty standard kind of stuff here, revising our demographics and projections with a focus on our subarea plans and strategies. That's things like our Woodland District Subarea Plan, our Depot District Subarea Plan, the Martin Way Corridor Study. This is also informed by our recently obtained economic and housing data as well. And then, potential amendments based on the community input and outreach. So this could be things like a future actual Depot District zoning district to combine some zones to move forward with a future Depot District Zone based on the subarea plan. That's been something that's been on that work program for some time. A potential consolidation of similar commercial zones. So we have a lot of different commercial zones around the community, some of which are very similar to others. We've started this now with the neighborhood commercial zone and want to look at expanding that to other commercial zones around the community. And then finally, implementing a community-driven process for site-specific rezones. So we want to use the community to engage with us as far as what sites they could see potentially handling other land uses, suggesting other uses for properties. And this really comes out of the Hicks Lake Multifamily Project Discussion, where, you know, the neighborhood definitely felt like that was not an appropriate zoning of that property. We want to basically ask the question to the community, hey, are there other areas where you feel like things aren't appropriate? Should we be looking at other zones or other uses in these areas? And we've already got a list. We've already been talking to the community over the last several years about this, and we want to engage them on that and move forward with that. Transportation element was last updated in 2012. The major efforts here are to integrate our various planning efforts that have been completed since then. So, as you can see on the screen, our Lacey Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, the Depot District Subarea Plan Recommendations, and then the recommendations coming out of the Martin Way Corridor Study as well. And then also, we do have additional state requirements now. One of them is that our transportation element actually has to have measures in it to increase physical activity across the community, and then also goals to reduce our per capita vehicle miles traveled. So this is a significant update. As the last one was done over, well, over 12 years ago now, the community's changed a lot. We have a lot of new road corridors and a lot of projects in the works that need to be reflected in that transportation element. Environment element, I just put on a picture of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan because the environment element update really kind of, I would say orbits around the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. So this includes putting the actual plan into our environmental element of our comprehensive plan, and then also integrating the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan policies throughout all of our comprehensive plan elements. So the state is now requiring that we look at all of our plans basically through a climate lens, if you will. So we need to make sure that everything that we're doing is, kind of refers back to the consistency with the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. The state is also requiring us to complete a climate resiliency sub-element. So as an element of our comp plan now, we have to basically plan for climate disasters. And so this is something that we will now have in our comprehensive plan and something that we'll likely engage a consultant to help us through. We are also required to address environmental justice and environmental health disparities across the community through our environmental element. And then also, we are required to inventory our critical areas and other undeveloped lands. And finally, we want to use this as an opportunity to update our tree canopy. So as part of our climate goals is to increase our urban forest canopy, we last completed an update to our Urban Forest Management Plan in 2022 that had a tree canopy inventory based on an aerial photograph that's flown every three years. That's, so that should have happened between now and then. And so we'd be ready for, to update that tree canopy assessment at that point. Our economic development element is due for an update, both the element itself as well as economic development strategy. This will largely be based on a 2022 economic analysis that was completed and will be done through business engagement, Wesley, when our Economic Development Coordinator will be leading this effort. Housing element, so I would say that out of the two, the two biggest updates, number one, you already heard about the environmental element with the climate plan. I think that's the first biggest. The second biggest is the housing elements, and this is largely related to so many of the requirements that have come from state law that require us to do more housing planning. First of all, House Bill 1220 requires us to project housing needs for all economic segments of our community at the county level. We've recently completed that. I think by, at the end of last year, the council was briefed on the housing projections. The second stage of that is currently underway right now, which is looking at our land capacity for housing to make sure that our projections meet those goals. And then finally, we are also required to examine racially disparate impacts, displacement and inclusion in housing policies, and policies to address them in our comprehensive plan. And we are currently working on a contract between the cities of Olympia, Lacey, and Tomwater to complete those, to complete that requirement. Integration, second bullet there is integration of our affordable housing strategy and housing action plans. Both of those have been adopted by the council since the last update to our comprehensive plan. Revising the demographics and projections, we do have a housing needs assessment that was done as part of the housing action plan. That'll be included in this as well. And then finally, here is to address through policies and regulations, manufactured home park preservation project that started in 2022 as a request from the Mountain Greens Mobile Home Parks residents. Utilities element, so utilities element kind of contains two parts. One is coordination with our own municipal water and wastewater system plans, but there's also a requirement that we are, we have to plan jointly with our private utilities. So that's Puget Sound Energy and Comcast. And so that's a, an update to this element that we're in constant coordination as a city with our own system, but the big effort here is to coordinate with the private utilities. The challenge for us is sometimes private utilities do not like providing that information because they believe it to be proprietary. And so it's always a difficult effort to try to get, especially with Comcast, seems to be a difficult thing to get a lot of good information from. But we'll do it, and we'll work through that to get the utility plan updated. And then those other requirements outside of the major comp plan update. So, an annual update to our capital facilities plan. As I think both Planning Commission and the council are aware, we have a brand-new capital facilities plan that was just adopted by the council last week. So this will be updated in coordination with the city budget, and then an annual update to our six-year transportation improvement program. Then I'll also talk a little bit about development code revision. So that was the comprehensive plan requirements. I'll also talk a little bit about the code requirements. I've categorized them basically into kind of two different categories, one state-mandated and one that is not state-mandated. So, state-mandated are, there's several related to housing and homelessness initiatives. These are recently passed within the last year or two bills related to, one related to middle housing, so requiring more middle housing, which we already do a lot of. I would say we're probably 90% compliant with that bill already. We just need to go the extra 10% to complete those middle housing amendments. And then also related to accessory dwelling units is another. And that will do things like adding, so instead of just having one ADU, you could have two, increasing the minimum square footage for ADUs. Those kinds of things that are now a state mandate for us to do. And then also, we are required to do a critical areas ordinance update based on best available science. For Lacey, that is typically updates to our wetland code. We don't have too many critical areas outside of our wetland areas. And then the non-state mandated list is standardizing our public notice requirements for permits, looking at and addressing mini storage units across the community, excuse me, mini storage uses. It seems like we, you know, are, we always struggle with where mini storage should appropriately be zoned or not. So examining that. Consolidation of similar commercial zoning districts, I think I might have mentioned that before, that would update the commercial zones. And then finally, a revision to the development guidelines and public work standards, which, copy that's on the slide there. The last time those were updated, the development guidelines were in 2017. So with that, that's what I've got to share with you tonight. Again, I'll just kind of leave you with that, you know, we've got a huge plate in front of, the Planning Commission has a huge plate in front of them to complete in the next two years. And, you know, as presented and as in front of you tonight, there's not a lot of wiggle room for additional, but happy to turn it over to the Planning Commission Chair to provide any more insight and feedback.
Thank you. So, I mean, we've kind of started working on some of this already. We're trying to work through the neighborhood commercial zoning right now. But this is going to be a pretty heavy lift for the Planning Commission over the next two years. So, I know there's often times when council will come up with ideas on things they'd like the Planning Commission to study and tackle. And we're certainly willing to entertain those ideas, but understand they're largely going to probably be, end up in a parking lot until this is done because this is state-mandated. But please, as you have an idea, please get it to us so you don't forget it. So, I don't know if any of the other Planning Commission members have any comments they'd like to make.
Yeah, so this is really, I want this time to be as interactive as possible between the Planning Commission and the council. You have, you have a heavy lift. I understand this. But, you know, I know we have some new members as well. But I'm curious, is there anything that you think, after looking at the work plan, that needs to be on the work plan that we've, that we're not looking at, that maybe we need to focus at, and we'll have some, maybe can have some more discussion about that? Or is there anything in particular that, you know, you're really looking forward to working on? And so, you know, I'm really curious from the Planning Commission side, the things, you know, where you're at on this work plan, and, you know, do you think we're hitting the mark? And I'm, we didn't go around and listen to anyone who wants to speak up. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I think the most, the most difficult one for us is going to be the affordable housing element. It just, it's rife with opinions, it's rife with definitions that we need to work on. So I think affordable housing is going to take up a huge chunk of what we're going to do.
I would agree with that, and it's going to be very fluid. Legislature is really laser-focused on affordable housing. And so I have no doubt, by the end of this legislative session, something that we're thinking about now is going to be different. And I'm sure, even over the next couple of years, that that's going to continually change as the legislature grapples with affordable housing and what they think is going to be the best solutions. You know, I often say the Capitol building is full of good ideas and intentions.
Yeah. So what about for the rest of the council, Planning Commission? Go ahead.
My observation is, I think it's, it's critical that we find the right balance between the state requirements and the feedback from the community. I think we have to strike a balance, and we can't just go too far in either direction. Because to listen too much to the wishes doesn't, doesn't really bring efficiencies, right, or compliance. But I don't think we can ignore the voices just to comply with the state. So I think that's, that's just a critical task in front of us.
We'll always be in a balancing act.
Yeah, and I've hearing over and over that the state is going to need a million new houses, 50% of our dwellings, 50% of which are going to be 0 to 50% of that AMI is really an overwhelming number to hear of what's needed in the next 20 years. And so I think that as we're looking for how much buildable lands we have and having that balancing act, it really is going to be an important time to be looking and at ways to make sure that the housing that we're providing is accessible to all people.
Yeah. And which is something that I hope you guys are, I know there can be a long process here, but, you know, the, one of the things that we've always tried to look at in Lacey is how do we incentivize, right? I mean, the private sector is going to need to build this affordable housing, and their margins are pretty slim. So what can we be doing on our end, on the public side of things, to incentivize and try to get the housing that we want? And maybe we need to be thinking outside the box. I know we've already said, okay, we're going to waive some, some fees if you're building affordable housing. We're doing that with the private sector and the public sector. I don't know how much we've been, you know, promoting that, but that's something that I think we need to continue to think about, is where can we incentivize? What does that look like? Obviously, you have to stay within the law. But, you know, I think the outside-the-box thinking is what we do really well here in Lacey. And so it's going to be up to you to sort of take all the information in and try to think, you know, make sure we're having the outreach to the, to the builders and to the developers and say, okay, what, what would it take for you guys to do it? And make sure you're getting all that information in. Because sometimes you just can't, it's hard to mandate this stuff if, you know, if it doesn't pencil, it's just not going to work. So, yeah, it will never be built. And so that's why I think, you know, that outreach is going to be important. And of course, it's, everything's a balancing act, but I think that's going to be an important part. Councilmember?
I have a question, maybe for you or maybe Ryan, but do we have the consultant online that's going to help us with our outreach plan? That's question number one.
We do. Well, we're in final negotiations, so we've got them selected. We haven't signed a contract yet.
Okay. So, more to come on that, but soon.
Yeah, correct.
Second question, do we get guidance from the state on how to define or how to identify vulnerable populations in overburdened communities? Is there a criteria for who we reach out to? Because essentially, they're telling us, go talk to the people that you haven't talked to yet, or who are most impacted by the changes you're going to be making. Sometimes those groups are really hard to reach.
Yeah, you're exactly right. I'm not sure if there's, you know, criteria. Certainly, those are kind of terms that probably have some sort of definition associated with them. But again, that's why we're, you know, getting a consultant that has people on staff that can translate anything into various languages, know exactly who to reach out to and how to reach out to them, and actually has some pretty creative responses to how to do that. So, we're excited because, like I said, you know, when this was about 10 years ago now, you know, we didn't have a lot of community engagement then. Frankly, we have a much different community today than we did 10 years ago. We're the most diverse community in Thurston County. And so, you know, I think, you know, we want to take advantage of some of the opportunities that we have to engage people that typically wouldn't be engaged in a planning process.
Deputy Mayor?
I just had a couple of questions about, a couple of things that I saw. But the, the number one was, under code updates, and it says that we need to address limitations on parking for housing units located near transit service. What does that, what does that mean for us? And I think about that complex on Britton Parkway where, you know, the bus was, was, the bus lane was added and the people could no longer park there. How's that going to look?
Yeah, good question. So there are some, again, that's a state requirement that basically says that, you know, we can't, we can't limit, so if there's a, it's frequent transit. So it's a, it's usually along Martin Way is where this is, where this would apply to, is for, along corridors with, it's either 15-minute or 30-minute transit service. You can't, you know, require over a certain amount of parking. So the state's becoming very, very specific. I mean, I guess the theme of this is a little bit is like, you know, where we, for so many years, have through local control been regulating things like this to encourage more transit use, less parking, and those kinds of things. The state now is saying, no, you must require, you must do these things. And so the state is giving, getting more and more involved in local control, local land use issues. And so this is one where they're saying, if you've got high-capacity transit that's got a certain, you know, schedule, that you can't have over a certain amount of parking in that area. But mostly, like I said, that's going to apply to Martin Way and not, not out Britton Parkway, not farther afield.
Brian, is that a, an attempt to try to encourage more density and infill along those corridors? So you're maximizing use of the property versus using it in parking and pavement?
That's correct. Yep. And, you know, it applies to us, but, you know, to, it applies along areas that have light rail and, you know, the other areas of Puget Sound. So, you know, that's essentially, the state is trying to get into the business of promoting additional density around areas that can handle it, especially areas that have high-frequency transit, light rail, those kind of other, those kind of amenities.
Is Martin Way the only corridor that we have that, that density of transit that they come often enough?
Right. I think, yeah, it's 15-minute headways, so.
Could be Pacific Avenue?
No, Martin Way would be it. Yeah.
Okay. Part two, in the, in the same section, it says that we need to ensure there are no limits to the number of unrelated persons that may occupy a household dwelling or unit. Does that, does that mean like a four-bedroom house in Lake Point can have 15 people living in it? Or what is that?
It means that the city can't define what a family is, essentially. It's, there are still building code limitations around occupancy and those kinds of things, but the city cannot limit who lives in a house based on the definition of a family.
Interesting. Okay. What about, anything else from this council? Go ahead, Nick.
Just because you brought up the word definition, maybe a simple question, but, and it was brought up over here, this affordable housing. It's an easy term, but what does affordable housing look like? And I would like some sort of understanding of what, more so that looks like to us in Lacey, what does building affordable housing actually mean?
Yeah, great question. And I'll, I'll point to a plan that we have for Lacey called our Affordable Housing Strategy. So it's, it's getting, I'll get, some of the data's a little stale at this point. I think it was completed in probably 2018 or 19. But it basically outlines how much housing costs in Lacey. Again, it's probably a little old. I'm imagining that all these numbers are going to be way higher than they were then. But, and then it equated what is affordable for the minimum wage worker that maybe works at Starbucks. It says what is affordable for a teacher? What is affordable for an enlisted soldier or maybe an officer at JBLM? Because it all means, what's affordable means different to you than it does to me, than it does to all segments of our community. And so we, I think we did a really good job then of defining, you know, what affordability is for these different income levels and what, what they could afford. You know, at that time, somebody living on minimum wage could not afford a single, or a two-bedroom apartment without sharing, you know, without helping to rent out that, that other, the other bedroom. Typically, the, I think the HUD definition of affordable is that you spend no more than 30% of your income on, on housing. That's typically what that means. But that can be, you know, that's based on an individual's income, it's a sliding scale.
I think my question is a little more, what type of units would we like to build that we would consider affordable? I think that's where the definition gets a little blurry.
Gotcha.
Because the costs are always going to go up, you know. But what type of buildings and housing do we actually want to build?
Yeah. So we just completed the, the housing targets or the, the housing projection calculations back at the end of last year. And if council remembers, Lacey- If council remembers, Lacey, Lacey's projections, essentially, we have met the market. So there, if you look at our housing projections, our gap is not at the market level. Our gap is, interestingly enough, it's above the market level and then well below the market level. And so when we're looking and and we're not going to plan for above the market level, right? That's, it'll take care of itself. What we need to do is plan for below the market level, specifically fifty percent or less of the area median income is where we we have that gap currently in our community. And that's where we need to plan more, incentivize more, develop more, is fifty percent or or less of the AMI is really where we lack, where we have the gap.
Mike?
And, oh, go ahead, Jeff, sorry. Oh, I was just going to say, first of all, if you can answer that question, what is affordable housing, you'll be at the pinnacle of the planning mountain, okay? People have been wrestling that for half a century. But as far as what types of units we want to see, I mean, that's where you work in concert with the development community, right? Because if if you mandate or or overplan for a certain type of development that the development community doesn't see as being something that's economically viable, nothing's going to happen. So we've got to make sure that we're walking in step with what they see as a viable plan for the city.
I agree. Mike? I just want to say thank you in advance because you guys are about to take on a heavy lift with the comprehensive plan. I've been there, Gil's been there, Lenny's been there, Robin and Carolyn, Ryan, before Ryan, David, I like to think, you know, Dr. Beeler and Dr. Savdi that were on the commission back there as well. We dissected every sentence to the extreme, Gil, and everybody could tell you. So I think the foundation's there, but still it's going to be an extreme lift and I I just, I respect you guys already and you haven't even put in the work yet, so. But other than that, I think that should be recognized. You guys are going to. Thank you. Earn your keep, for sure. Lenny?
I was just going to add to what Jeff was saying, actually. You know, we've talked for years about the need in this community for more starter homes, small, single family homes, you know, thousand square feet kind of homes. And right now, the problem is there's no incentive to a builder or developer to build those. They can't make money on it, bottom line, right now. So that's the kind of stuff we need to work on is how do we make it viable for a developer to actually build those homes in our community? Because there's a huge need for them, but the the land is too expensive. It's and the hookups and everything else. It doesn't make sense to build them for the builder.
One of the ideas that I've had and I've talked to our city manager about is one of the things that we've done really well in Lacey is our ADU program, right? We have these pre-approved plans, ready to go, turnkey, you don't have to go through a big permit process. You know, why stop at eight hundred square feet, right? We could do pre-approved plans for twelve hundred square feet, a starter home in in Lacey and be one of the first to do it in our, in, you know, in Washington State. And if we can do it with ADU, we can do it with a starter home. And that would incentivize quite a bit. It's like, you can, I want this house right here, they prove it, it's you're pre-approved, you're done. And so it's sort of that outside the box thinking that, you know, let's continue to think about ways we can incentivize that and making it as easy and as inexpensive as possible for the for the private sector to build it. That's where we're going to have to go. And so if we do it with ADU, I think we can do it with a starter home, so.
I'm a builder by trade.
Yeah.
So I can add a little into that. They recently did a study on the cost increase for homes and, you know, we've had a four hundred and four percent increase in cost costs. You're right, it takes away all the incentives, exactly what you're saying, to even build a home. I own a lot, minimum square footage on that lot by HOA standard is sixty hundred square feet. If I built a house on that, I might make twenty thousand dollars. That's not an incentive to invest two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When you're talking, pre-COVID, it was a hundred and fifty a square foot to build a home, doing it myself. And now, at post-COVID, we're now talking two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. And why do we have those increases? Because we have state mandates for our energy code standards, we have state mandates that for our electrical now has to be arc fault. You know, that adds, you know, I can just keep adding on all the stuff. And the energy code is kind of ridiculous. So I was wondering, my question is, why is the states not giving feedback to the the cities, the counties, et cetera, giving feedback to the states and saying, look, these new laws are all fancy dancy for climate control, et cetera, but your new energy standards are not having any benefit? I mean, you have a depreciating benefit to what the new energy codes do, but it increases my cost by a hundred volt.
Yeah, I think that's maybe something that you hopefully through this process that you can sort of, you know, work with the development company and say, you know, what what what's made sense and what doesn't make sense? And if we're talking about affordable housing, then maybe we need to have more of a balance, right? If it, you know, if it costs, you know, fifty dollars a square foot more, but you're actually that you're very incremental on 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 the insulation and everything else, then maybe that's not making sense for for affordable, you know, for a certain type of home. I wouldn't try to limit our outside the box thinking on just what's available, right? What's the code right now? I would say, well, you know, what will it actually take to get affordable housing? And if we need then to take that to the legislature or whatever and say, this is what we've learned, I think we should do it, right? And so let's keep that in mind as we're going through going through this process.
So another element to what you said is obviously the cost of the dirt.
Yeah.
You know, if I've got a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars into just the dirt and the utilities before we even have dug a hole.
Yeah.
Then what's left in in affordable housing costs to build?
Yeah. That's why I think maybe we go into the pre-approved side of things, you can maybe lower that back down a little bit, but we have to figure that all out.
So I just, I wanted to provide some numerical context to to this conversation. And the area median income for Thurston County is eighty nine thousand dollars. Half of that is obviously like around forty five thousand dollars. So so if you if you take that forty five thousand dollars and and you're trying to work the numbers backwards to find out how much that is in terms of purchasing power, first of all, thirty percent of that number is going to be about eleven hundred dollars a month. And so as as somebody who does this all day, every day as a loan officer, that that purchasing power is about a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. It just doesn't get you that far. So what are we talking about? Are we talking about, you know, you know, everybody having to rent? Or because I don't, I, you know, as somebody who's in the market all day, every day, I don't see anything under, you know, three hundred thousand, two seventy five for purchasing for for any of this. So so like you said earlier, Mr. Mayor, it is truly a heavy lift. And it, I mean, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but those are the numbers and that's how they bear out. And so, yeah, you're, the work is definitely cut out and.
Well, and I do think there we're starting to see the public sector thinking about this. If the if all the cost is in the land, you know, what land does the public sector have that we can control that, right? And I know there, I just had a meeting just today with DNR, who's looking at doing lease holds on property, where they're going to hold a long term lease, lowers that cost of that that land all the way down to very, very affordable. You partner with a nonprofit like Habitat, they come in and you can have, you can build, start building affordable housing. And that's what DNR is starting to look at, and I'm totally supportive of that. I think, you know, we we have inventory of properties we own, could we do something similar? You know, these are things that we need to start doing to really start moving the needle. We've talked, we've done a lot of talking. I want, you know, where are the actual solutions? That's what we, I think we we need to think to take, you know, really look at. So I know we've talked a lot, is there anything else from the planning commission? I just wanted to throw a couple of things out there that I'm not sure we've, is in the work plan, I just wanted to bring it up. One is on the transportation element. For a long time, I I've thought about our transportation network and, you know, the public sector is only focused on roads. And yet sidewalks are somehow the responsibility of the private sector to build out. And it doesn't work, right? You don't, you, if that if that strategy worked, we would have complete networks of sidewalks, you know, and we don't. It doesn't make any sense to me either. Like, we care about the road, but we don't care about the sidewalk. Somehow the public cares cares more about the street than it does the sidewalk. It just doesn't make any sense to me. However, I understand that would be a big, heavy lift to say now the public sector is now responsible for every sidewalk. However, there are a lot of new grants that are out there that are focusing on moving pedestrians, specifically looking at gaps and safe walk, safe routes to schools and so on and so forth. And I just think we need to think more holistically about our transportation network and start including the sidewalk as an important part of our transportation network, too. I know that's a lot to ask, but I think the way we're doing it now doesn't make any sense whatsoever, and that's why we have gaps everywhere. And that's not a, that's not a good community in my, in my mind.
So we we already have the pedestrian bicycle plan. And the pedestrian bicycle plan did a huge analysis of both our city limits and urban growth area to see where the gaps exist, both from sidewalks, but also bike lanes and what we called spot projects. And those are usually things like street crossings and those kinds of things. And it set forth kind of a list of various projects to complete, and and we had a scoring rubric for each project based on the, you know, where where it is around the city and the amount of use and those kinds of things, you know? And so that list exists. So that planning has been done. I think maybe what you're talking about is a funding strategy that that would be associated with prioritizing or, you know, implementing those projects.
That's exactly right, because without a funding strategy, then that plan doesn't mean anything, right? And so if if we've done all the good work, which it sounds like we have, then let's figure out a a funding strategy to implement that work and actually see that network finally come together. Because I've seen gaps in sidewalks that have been there for twenty five, thirty years, and it just like drives you crazy. And so, yeah, we need a good funding strategy for that. So that's number one. The second one is, well, I believe is needs to be an ongoing work with Thurston County and Thurston County's planning commission on all the issues that we have with the city of Lacey and our urban growth area. We know for a fact, I've been saying this for a long time, that the majority of the growth that's going to come to all of Thurston County is going to go into our UGA. That is problematic for lots of reasons, right? The county is just not equipped to handle that type of urban service of of that much population growth going to an urban growth area. And so what we've been saying for a long time is, you know, is there ways that we can continue to work with Thurston County to, you know, either streamline their process, maybe us take over certain projects? I don't know, but that's going to require ongoing conversations with Thurston County and the planning commission. And I just, we can't just let that go. There's, it's just too important, that relationship between Lacey and Thurston County. And I don't see that anywhere on the work plan, but I hope we're not dropping that work.
So I I think the reason it's not on the work program is because that's a kind of a department initiative. That's not something that necessarily touches the planning commission. What did touch the planning commission or what will touch the planning commission in the future? And I didn't put up a list list of accomplishments, but in twenty twenty three, the joint plan was finally adopted by Thurston County. Our planning commission sat through a number of those meetings and was involved in Thurston County's planning commission as they went through that process. The second step in that is to make sure that our codes align. So the next step from Thurston County will be to make sure to basically take our municipal code updates that have been done probably over the last twenty years and implement them into their standards. That that's something that would likely touch the planning commission. But what would not is those kind of what I'll say, department initiatives, those things that are kind of a director to director level conversation or those kinds of things that are, you know, an elected official to elected official conversation. Those those things don't appear in the work program. So but all that to say is that even though it's not in the work program, the the code updates that Thurston County will be completing, hopefully in the next year, will and will be a high priority for the the planning commission because we really need to, first of all, get things consistent before we can even move forward with other strategies.
I just, I just know, I've talked to developers who said that they are will never not do another project in our urban growth area again if they have to, if they have to run that back through the county. That is a issue that we need to find a solution for, right? Like ASAP, because we're in a housing crunch and if there's, we're not billing housing because of a technicalities between working with the county and the city and all that's, man, we need to solve that problem, right?
To fix that problem, though, they need to fix their permitting process. They have huge problems in their permitting unit.
I agree, and I don't think the county is really ever set, the county's not set up to be processing all of that. And so I think we need to continue to have conversations of how we can streamline that, how we can maybe at some point take over certain projects. If 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 a developer approaches us and say, hey, we'd rather use the city than the county, then we need to have a process to be able to do that and leave it up to them which way they want to go. That would be great, but that's going to take some work to figure that out. Yeah, well, I'll continue to work on my end. Is there anything else from anyone?
I would just say. I'm, sometimes we we tend to be very concentrated on the tri-city area and what we can see maybe bordering Seattle or Tacoma in terms of ideas about affordable housing. It seems to me that we could spend some time looking outside this area, looking at other developed countries perhaps or cities who have a huge affordable housing problem and have somehow developed ways to do that, ways to house people. He's shaking his head because he doesn't believe it's true.
New Zealand.
But there are places, there are opportunities to look at other things because we, we at this table, with your, the exception of you, we are not going to build an affordable house. We have to make it appropriate for people to build houses in Lacey so that the people who live here and work here can actually raise their kids here and live in the city.
I I agree. With that, I didn't run this by Rick yet, but, you know, we have, we have a a new process where we no longer have committees, we're doing a lot more work within work sessions and council meetings. We've always usually wait to pass stuff in in council meetings. I don't know if that makes a lot of sense going forward under our new, our new, that the, our new format. And the reason why I bring this up is because there needs to be a motion to put this on a consent agenda for a future council meeting. I don't know why we couldn't have a motion just to approve the work program of the planning commission right now.
If if the the council would like to do that and there are no changes to the work program, then that the council could, the idea by putting on a future consent agenda, if there are some changes that we can go back and make those changes and place them.
Is there any changes that need to be made to the work program? Can then, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the work plan for the planning commission for twenty four and twenty five.
It's been moved and seconded? Is there any discussion? Then, yeah, we're putting this on the spot, so all in favor of that motion, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion now she carries.
We got a thumbs up from the clerk.
Well, just as a side note, too, is one of the the challenges of putting this format versus on our consent agenda is also just recording the the public decision. And so that's why we had to have everybody raise their hands to be audible so we can make sure we track and record it accurately.
Okay, thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. And never hesitate to reach out to any of anyone on council. You have something, we're here to listen. Okay. Much for your time tonight, everybody. Hey, thank you, Jeff.
Just to point out, if you saw on that screen, the work of our clerks department to be able to record that vote so quickly on the fly, on the audible. So I just want to shout out to our clerk team.
Hi. All I want to hear is thank you. I knew it was close to that, but I worked with that all day. Yeah, so, um, the, uh, yeah, you have to, so AMIs are done by county. Yeah, so, the, yeah, you have to, so AMIs are done by county.
There's one extra, yeah, sorry.
Okay, next up is our Parks Culture and Recreation Board Work Plan. I'll turn it over to Jen.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council, and also to all the Parks Board members that are here. We appreciate you being here and we appreciate the opportunity to celebrate accomplishments. You know, we never get to celebrate enough. We work so hard. And although our job is fun, it's also a lot of work. And so every opportunity we can get to celebrate is a great one.
And before we get started, let's go around and do some introductions as well.
Yes, oh, thank you.
Let's get started.
Aaron Wheeler, Park Commissioner.
Nate Clay, Youth Commissioner.
Hillary Dykstra, Parks Commissioner.
Nick Dunning, Council.
Jen Burbidge, Director of Parks Culture and Recreation.
Robin Vasquez, Council.
Malcolm Miller, Deputy Mayor.
Bill Fosbury, Parks Commission.
Michael Steadman, Council.
Lori Davies, Parks Commissioner.
Carolyn Cox, Council.
Wendy Goodwin, Commissioner and Chair for Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation.
Lyndy Greenstein, Council.
I'm Jenny Wilson. I'm Senior Parks Planner for the Parks Department.
And Rick Walks, City Manager.
And Andy Ryder, Mayor.
All right, and I also want to introduce our new Executive Assistant, Carter Gibson. So, yay! We're so happy that you're here. It's his second day. And so I figured it'd be nice for him to come and meet everybody all at the same time, so. So actually Chair Goodwin and Jenny Wilson are going to be doing the presentation. But before they start, I just really want to sincerely thank this board for all of their hard work over the past year. We really appreciate you. With that, I'll turn it over to Chair Goodwin.
Thank you, Jen. Yeah, I am so delighted to be here and I have really enjoyed working with all the Commissioners on our team. It is a, we are the fun group. I won't go, we do have a lot of fun, so. Thank you, Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Miller, Council members for having us this evening. I will be highlighting some of the 2023 accomplishments. The full list is in your packets. That always throws me off, that picture. A considerable accomplishment was getting the six-year update to the Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. This is a guiding document for the future of our department and is based on significant community input. As you recall, the top takeaways from the public input were a pool. There is a need for a warmer-temperature pool that can be accessed during the day. We also had indoor recreation and playground, spray parks, and the preservation of our open spaces, additional trails, and natural areas. Our community is enthusiastic to donate and add amenities to our parks. The Park Board approved and launched the enhancements program to provide a streamlined and equitable way to consider additions and ensure contributions are well documented, celebrated, and shared with the Park Board and City Council. This year, we have had a free little library built by our Girl Scout troop 45298 on the left at Wonderwood Park and accepted a financial pledge for playground and replacement costs and had two large stadium bleachers donated.
And then I'll add real quick, on the right, you'll see the Ken Ballsley Memorial Bench that's over at Civic Plaza, which came through the enhancements program as well.
Initially adopted in 2019, the sponsorship and naming rights policy had an update this year. The update included a more formal review process with a supplemental questionnaire to ensure our potential sponsors align with our department's mission, visions, and goals. The next accomplishment was updating our park rule signs. As you may notice, the new signs use icons and are well-designed and easy to read. The signs are gradually being replaced at all of the parks and public fairs. We want to thank you for creating and helping us to design this. Thank you, thank you, thank you. They're starting to go up. We had in 2023, which was significant, years for grants with the Parks Culture and Recreation Department, was awarded almost a million dollars for the Greg Cuyo Park. We also had the PARC Foundation of Thurston County donated $6,000 toward the Financial Assistance Program, formerly called our Scholarship Program. And two community groups are pledged funding for towards that park. As you know, the Greg Cuyo Park Phase 1A project is underway, and we've made significant progress. And it's been made towards a 90% design. The stormwater system is being redesigned, however. The project should be out by ad at the end of this year and under construction in 2025. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Jenny Wilson.
Hello. So I'm Jenny. I'm Senior Parks Planner for the department. I'm going to go over some of our work plan items for 2024. You have the complete list in your packet, so I'm not going to go over every item. These are just new or key items for 2024, starting with our construction projects. For main projects this year is replacing the Woodland Creek Bridge. It's again on our work plan. This was originally a homemade bridge that has been at the park for over 40 years. The new bridge, which is obviously very needed, is going to have guardrails, and the project will include some fencing to protect the creek. As many of you are probably aware, the construction project for the parking lot at The Rack has started. It's going to continue through June, and this is going to include a paved parking lot with 340 additional parking stalls, electric vehicle charging stations, and bus parking stalls. So obviously, the Regional Athletic Complex is a big, big facility, so we needed some additional parking. We're excited about that. The Wonderwood Park Trail Court Surface and Basketball Hoop at the Sunset Drive Entrance are pretty worn, cracked, popping up, so that's creating a hazard, and that's on our construction work plan this year. The Regional Athletic Complex is also in need of some additional safety netting on some of the baseball fields, so that's on the work plan. And also for our work plan, under the planning projects, which is just kind of a precursor to construction, is some exciting new planning projects, which is the Bush Park Playground, which will be under planning for replacing this year. And the McKinney House, which is on Pacific Avenue. I'm sure many of you have driven by and seen this, this house. It's a historic building that needs an assessment. The property needs to be assessed. It's on wetlands. So this year, we'll be working to determine what options exist for the building and that site. And then 2024 is a big year for The Rack with a few projects. Phase 3 design is on the, on the list. Also upgraded Wi-Fi to span the entire park and allow groups to stream games online. It's a pretty popular request that we're getting. Also, an upgrade and conversion to the ballfield lighting system to LED, our current warranty. And some of the lights are falling, failing a little bit, so we need to upgrade that. And it's getting expensive to repair, so that needs to happen in the next couple of years. So planning for that's underway. That's our highlights for this year. Once again, we're just so grateful for all the time, effort, and guidance that our Parks Board Commissioners put in. It's, it is a fun, fun job, as Wendy said, but they're an amazing group of volunteers, and they volunteer a lot of time and effort and thought into, into the board. So we thank them very much for all their work and help keeping us running, so thank you.
I'm going to turn it back over to the, to the Commission on, is there anything that you are excited to work on? Anything that you're looking forward to? Or also, is there anything that you think you should bring to our attention that we maybe we need to focus on going, going forward?
I have something to just bring your attention to. We've talked about this in our meetings. It's just thinking about the previous conversation about building more housing and affordable housing. I think I'm so glad that Lacey prioritizes green space and parks, and I think we need to continue to do that, particularly as lot sizes get smaller and people don't have their own outdoor space, a big backyard, or more people are living in apartments or condos. I think it's important for people who have pets and kids and just anyone to be able to easily get outside to a safe environment, to enjoy the outdoors and, you know, be healthy in that way. So as we're making plans for housing, I hope that we can continue to keep that in the forefront, too.
Absolutely. About from our Youth Commissioners, is there anything that you think we need to be focusing on for, for our youth? I know I just put you on the spot.
No, not really much to add.
I'll add quickly that our Youth Commissioner Clay is wanting to do, you'll see on the work plan, a litter program that he would like to head up.
Okay. Yes, I myself have gone to every Lacey, every park in Lacey, or park and recreational area in Lacey. I've surveyed it and ranked them in need of pickup. And I am working with Timberline's National Honor Society to pick up all the parks in Lacey.
Thank you. Thank you very much, yeah. Anything, what about from Council?
I would just add one other thing. I think also making them walkable and bikeable, as you were bringing up, is so critical to especially, because the school district is working on also in their levy to have walkable, bikeable patterns to the neighborhood schools. And so I think that's going to be a key element also.
I definitely think that a partnership with North Thurston Public Schools and the City of Lacey on going after grants to do those sort of things makes a very strong argument. And I know there are a lot of new federal grants out there that are looking at sidewalks. We just didn't have a funding stream before, and now there are some funding streams available, but you just need the grants to go after them and do them. So I think, you know, working with North Thurston Public Schools is definitely, makes a lot of sense. Go ahead, Wendy.
So I just wanted to add, Walk and Roll Program also has a lot of great programs that I've been speaking with them about. I'm really excited to work with them as a collective group with inner-city transit as well. And I know Emily just came on board with the new kind of turnover for inner-city transit. So Walk and Roll has been kind of a place where I think there could be some of that talk of how can we get more representation and actually get kids out on bicycles and having space, safe spaces to do that, and then teaching them with their family members how to do that, getting parents involved with their kids on being outdoors and using those type of programs. So I'm really excited to partner with Walk and Roll for that with the parks as well. I'm also the Greg Cuyo with the QR codes and getting some of our wildlife available to the community members where they can actually look on that. I think Stream Team is another avenue that we're looking at for them to be able to come in and help us do some navigation and wildlife searches for the kids with their parents. And Timberland Regional Library has the kits where they can go and explore. So there's a lot of great opportunities. I think the partnerships with a lot of our entities that are already built. I'm still learning a lot of them. There's so many cool resources in our area. I want to keep pushing out that information and then getting feedback from all of them as well. So more to come on that, but I think they're all on our work plan as well.
I was just going to say, you know, thank you. This community, I think, takes a lot of pride in our park system. They really do. I mean, we hear it. I'm sure I'm not the only one. I'm sure all council hears it from people regularly, just how much they love the park system in Lacey. So it's a lot of that's due to the work you guys are doing, so keep up the hard work. And I'm really excited and looking forward to Greg Cuyo Park. I think that's going to be just an incredible addition to this community.
I agree.
So you kind of stole my, my idea there. The park system in the city is, I think, it's amazing. It's probably the best in the county. And the 3rd of July continues to get better. The space is used more efficiently, seemingly every year. The Rack is expanding and going into a phase 3, and then there's 540 acres off Carpenter Road that is going to be Cuyo Park. So I actually ride my bicycle on Saturday mornings down to The Rack. It's, it's amazing to see how many people just go there to just walk around The Rack. They absolutely love it, and it seems as if we have some of the best green spaces in the county because when I talk to some of those people, they're not from Lacey. They drove here from Bucota or DuPont or whatever because they don't have the green spaces that we have. So I just applaud you guys for continuing to, to, to knock it out of the park and not letting up on, on, on making sure that we have the kind of green spaces that people here will enjoy.
Which is going to lead me right into, do you have?
Oh, I, you know, I just really just wanted to add, I wanted to kind of second your notion, Mayor Ryder, about the bikeable access in between our green spaces and for youth. As someone who grew up as a kid in Lacey, and, you know, there was a time that you could ride your bike across College Street. It did exist. And, and now it seems, you know, now having a son of my own who's, who's reaching a bikeable age where he's going to be going and kind of outreach in the community more. You know, we have these kind of barriers to, to that access. So I love the plan for the Depot District and, and, you know, making more sidewalks accessible where, you know, my son doesn't have to play Frogger, like he calls it, when he, when he walks up to a busy street. So, so yeah, so just keep it up because it's, it's, I think it's important for our youth to be able to have access to all these places.
Right.
I co-sign all of those comments as another person who bikes in this community and has small children. And I would like to teach them that you can get places by bike. And yeah, trying to cross Rattle or College is like taking your life in your hands, even if you're a competent adult bike rider. So try to get a couple of children who are like wobbly on a bike across Rattles, don't, don't actually try. But I think the work that we're doing with our Parks Plan and the work that we're doing with the Comprehensive Plan, the larger Comprehensive Plan, and all of our transportation planning, these things are connected, right? Like, can we start talking about putting bike lanes on roads when we're doing the repaving, right? So how are we identifying opportunities where we could add bike lanes so that our streets are safer, so that our kids can bike more, and they can get to those green spaces?
I definitely think we need to make sure we have safe routes to every park, you know, in our community. That needs, should be, should be a priority. We want our kids to go outside and play, but then you, then there's no safe way for them to get there. That doesn't make any sense. You know, for as a kid who grew up here, too, you could ride your bike all over this town. And, you know, I can't believe my parents just let me do it, you know, back then, but it was a different time. It just was a different time. And I forget, you know, our, our population has more than doubled since we were kids, you know. So lives, lives changed, and the traffic is one of them. And, you know, that's why I think our focus on our sidewalks and safe crossings and all this stuff has become more and more important as our populations, you know, continue to grow. I do want to bring up just a couple, a couple of things. The Tangle Wild Pool, that was always the, if you knew someone over in Tangle Wild, it was awesome because you got into their pool. And but you knew, there was a time where you only, you had to be from that community in order to use it. They have opened it up to access for anyone. I'd be interested in a partnership with the Tangle Wild, that, that Tangle Wild Association that runs their pool and possibly the City of Lacey. And if you've been to that pool, there's a lot of area. You could probably maybe even expand that pool, and we could have access outside for our kids, what everyone wants. And maybe we could do it for a lot less expensive with them doing it. So that's something to think about, number one. Number two, it's been brought up a couple of times, The Rack. We are getting really close to going out for the next phase of our Rack. And I was a little surprised. I didn't see any of that on this work plan.
It is under planning.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I just missed it. Thank you. Okay, good. I'm glad I missed it. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say valued park system, it leads to a successful life and a healthy life. The mayor's daughter goes to TCU. She played basketball here in Lacey. She played track here in Lacey. My daughter was a national champion and a state champion in dance. And she's a very good competitive volleyball, all from Lacey. My son, baseball, state champ. It's, it all starts with you guys and getting our community involved in the park system and getting them involved in what we're doing here. And, you know, you guys taking time away from your regular life to, for everybody in the city is, I mean, outstanding and can't thank you guys enough, so.
I also want to thank you for the McKinney House work. This was sort of, this was sort of one that was, it's been near and dear to my heart. I mean, for, you know, this is the last standing structure, resort structure we have left in all of Thurston County. And if it wasn't for the resorts on our lakes in this area, we would not probably be here today, we wouldn't be Lacey, that's for sure. I don't know what we'd be. It's what put us on the map and it's a big part of our history. And all those resorts, resort structures are gone. There's one left in all of Thurston County, and it's the McKinney House. And it's, you know, I think we can think, I know we're doing the needs assessment. It's definitely, we've let it just sit there for a long time. But I really think we can come up with some cool public-private partnership and that actually be used again at some point. And, you know, I think it's a really cool structure that we need to save. I know it's not going to be cheap to do it, but we're talking about our history here. And that's, you know, I think that we can do something really cool. We've seen what happens at the, at Briggs when they, you know, they went into partnership with Starbucks, but man, that thing was going downhill, too. And now the community is using it. I'd love to see something like that happen with us. So I'm just, I know, I'm just really happy that it's on there. We're going to do a needs assessment and that hopefully we can come up with something cool, a cool project for that, for that structure. Anyone else?
I would like to add something, just to acknowledge and thank the Public Works Parks Maintenance and also the Capital Projects Team. So thank you Scott Agar and your staff for doing so much to keep our parks beautiful and, you know, providing project management for those bigger projects that you see on the work plan. So thank you very much.
With that, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the 2024 work plan?
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the 2024-2025 Parks Cultural and Recreation Board Work Program. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. Thank you, everyone. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
No, it's amazing. Our parks are amazing.
I love them.
I met them all the time with my grandkids. All of them, they go different parks.
And all of them are accessible.
They're all great. Beautiful parks. I'm really excited for Greg Cuyo.
I am.
What I'm excited about is that it's not going to be just more balls. It's going to be totally different. I think that's going to be a huge attraction. I think that's going to bring people all over the place.
Full stop.
Every day I'm like, what else can we do?
Yeah, we got enough. We're good. I think there's a partnership there. I just don't know what that looks like. I just threw it out there. Feature. Oh, really? Yeah. Outdoor pool, clean, all the kids. Okay, now we're to the Historical Commission work plan, and let's go around and do some quick introductions. We'll start with John.
Hello, I'm John Halverson, a member of the Historical Commission.
And former mayor of Lacey, mayor.
Nick Dunning, council.
Jen Verbage, Parks Director.
Lacey. Robin Bazquez, Lacey City Council.
Malcolm Miller, deputy mayor.
Michael Stedman, council.
Jim Keough, Chair of the Historic Commission.
Carolyn Cox, council.
Lenny Greenstein, council.
Erin Quinn Balcho, museum curator.
Rick Wach, city manager.
And Andy Ryder, your mayor. I'll turn it over to Erin.
All right. Oh, yeah, actually, I was just going to turn it over to Erin, but I do like to, I like to thank the commission. First, I need to ask though, do we have any commissioners joining us via Zoom?
I know, I noticed that we're down a couple.
Oh, okay. All right, well, thank you for checking.
Who are we missing?
So we are missing several, so Commissioner Getz, Commissioner Tyler.
Commissioner Patane and Commissioner Wykoff.
And Commissioner Wykoff is our chair, vice chair, excuse me. Anyway, so just wanted to acknowledge.
Do we have a youth council members?
We are, we're currently, there's going to be a reassignment for our youth member. Yeah, so I, yes, I would like to turn it over to actually Erin Quinn Balcho, our museum curator, and Chair Jim Keough are going to make the, do the presentation for tonight. So I'll pass it over to the chair.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Miller and council members. I'll be highlighting some of our 2023 accomplishments. You'll find a complete list in your packet, looks like this. Of significance this year, we wrapped up the second Heritage Capital Grant from the Washington State Historical Society in June. That was $608,000. That was basically saying the stage, the museum prep, the studies that were necessary for ultimately doing construction. With the next phase of the project being a heavy lift, we launched a Funding Strategy Committee to determine the next steps. That committee is heading in toward its third meeting next month. As you know, we, going to the next slide.
Sorry, the remote's not working.
We've had a big loss to the historical community this past year with the passing of Ken Balzy last February. To honor him and in recognition of his creation of the Historian of the Year Award, we renamed it after him. And so in April, we awarded that to the Ken Balzy Historian of the Year Award to Dr. Thelma Jackson for her work in collecting oral histories of Black people in Thurston County and publishing a book on the project. And you can see there, of course, the cover of that book. We had a successful year with nine museum programs during the course of the year, including a continuation of our History Talks series. I have to admit, I've attended most of those and have enjoyed them immensely. We also had summer and fall craft projects, four of them that we did this year, to encourage more visitation from families at the museum. And we thought that was pretty successful. We plan to continue that in the future. I can say that I took my grandsons to one of those and they had a great time making wagons for the Oregon Trail and then tracking the path, the three different paths that my wife's family took across that. They hit the north of Central and the south along the way over. So we had a good time doing that with them. This past year, we launched the Stories of South Sound Oral History Project in order to fill gaps in museum research and collections to include histories and experiences of historically underrepresented cultures and groups throughout Lacey and the South Sound. The next slide will show the grants that we received or made progress on in 2023. We wrapped up two grants, the Heritage Grant, Capital Grant that we already talked about, and a $5,000 Thurston County Heritage Grant to continue work on scanning the Lacey Leader Negative Collection. We were awarded $15,000 in local history grant, which funded an intern to work the Stories of the South Sound project, which we just mentioned earlier. We received our usual sum of $48,500 from the lodging tax for operating funds. And then most significantly, we received two donations from the Lacey Historical Society, totaling $55,000. $5,000 is to be used for a historical marker at the Jacob Smith House and $50,000 for museum exhibits, programs, and archival collections. And I would, should mention the fact that we have a very good connection with the Lacey Historical Society, since John Halverson sits on their board as well as on ours. I will then pass the presentation over to Erin to talk about the 2024 work plan.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim. So as Jim mentioned, this is also in your packets, our work plan. So the kiosk, the historic interpretive kiosk that will be placed at the rack is going to be installed this year. We are continuing to work with the Thurston County Historical Commission to place historic information in the high-traffic location at the rack for the community to learn and enjoy information about the area. The picture on the top there is what it will somewhat look like. It's going to be multi-sided. The writing and design are in their final phases now. And in fact, I just received the first panel for review, so it's coming along. And then we will also be working on the Jacob Smith House Historic Marker that was so generously funded by the Lacey Historical Society. And then we would also like to add historic photos to the interior of the Lacey Depot so that that site has some more historic interpretation and so that the public can get a sense for what the area looked like at the time the depot was in service. And in May, we will be celebrating Lacey History Month and hopefully awarding a new recipient for the Ken Balzy Lacey Historian of the Year Award. So one of the biggest projects we will be working on this year is related to two of our significant historic properties, the McKinney Building, which we talked about earlier in this meeting, and the Jacob Smith House. It recently came to light that although the Jacob Smith House is on the state register of historic places, it was never actually put on the local register. So we are hiring a historic preservation consultant to complete that work, get the nomination form finished, and get it put back or put on the register. And then, as we talked about, the McKinney Building needs to be addressed. In addition to completing property research to determine its appropriateness for addition to the local register potentially, we will also be completing a wetland delineation study that the Parks Board talked about. We'll be working closely together on those to ensure that we have a full understanding of the property and the site before we move forward. I would also like to add that it has come to light that there are potentially other properties that may be from the resort era still standing. There's a cabin at Gwinwood that we suspect might be of an era to be of the resort era, but that would require a study and it's a private property. And then there's another property that is near Long Lake that still needs some research to be done, but we suspect that it might be related to the Linger Longer Resort, which opened later. It opened in the late 40s. So, so I think those would be some interesting additions to that, that conversation as well. So I would like to say that we are really grateful to the Historical Commission. They give us great advice and guidance and put in their time and effort in volunteering, not just for the commission, but Tyra Keough volunteers his time to do collections work at the museum, and we appreciate that. And so I put these pictures on the last slide to honor the fact that we're building a new police station, and I thought it would be fun to show some pictures of police past. So yeah, that picture at the left is dispatch from the early days. Anyway, so we are asking you to, well, I was going to say to add to the consent agenda, but I'm assuming that you're going to approve it. Our 2023 accomplishments and the 2024 work plan for your approval. And we are glad to answer any questions you might have.
Just like I've been doing, I'm going to turn it back over to first the Historic Commissioners. And is there anything, are you looking forward to? Is there anything that you think we need to focus on that maybe needs to be on the work plan or anything looking at you, John?
Well, as you know, Mr. Mayor, I agreed to this appointment because my number one priority is trying to get the Lacey Museum built, the new one. And so I'm helping with the Funding Strategy Committee and doing whatever I can there. As president of the Lacey Historical Society, we're also working on helping acquire more history for the collection. And we have a considerable amount of assets right now. So we're kind of waiting for when the Strategy Committee for the city gets that all organized, and then we'll probably be very actively participating in helping that. I would just say that while the museum is number one, I have a new, great project that I want to see is the McKinney House now. I learned all about it tonight.
Thank you.
How important it is to you, sir.
Thank you. You know, and I've, the relationship that we've had with Historic Society has been an important relationship over the years. Obviously Shirley Jajic for years was a powerhouse in this community and her work with Historic Society and City of Lacey, we have lots of great projects that we've worked on together over the years. I'm really excited that hopefully we're renewing that partnership. I do think that we need to continue to look at our historic homes in our community and making sure, you know, that maybe we have a packet together that says, you know, you are in a historic home, you know, there's opportunities to be on historic register. What does that mean? What does that look like? And also for some of these homes that are historic in nature, but are maybe needing a little help, is looking at maybe a combination of working with Historic Society and coming up with a grant program to help some of these homes so they don't fall into the disrepair like we're seeing with the McKinney House and some of their things that, you know, if there's something that we can do to help preserve some of our Lacey history in some of these older homes, the home and, I mean, there's, there's, there's the home and house. There's a lot of things out there that mean a lot to this community. You know, the ongoing communication with them, making sure, you know, we're supporting them. And of course, the last thing is, we have a, do have an historic neighborhood. I know I'm attached to that, but I think we should be, you know, looking at that historic neighborhood and making sure it's being, you know, very well documented and some resources going there. It's our first, you know, plotted neighborhood in Lacey. We have, you know, some notification that that's what that is. You see that on Lacey Street and Ullery Street, but there's no signage that comes in on 7th Avenue that says you're entering the historic neighborhood. There's no signage or anything on Balker Street either. And, you know, I'm just, maybe that's something we can work with Historic Society on, maybe work with a neighborhood grant program, whatever, to see what we can do to make sure that character remains there. You know, that's another couple ideas I want to throw out there. Obviously, I love Lacey history, too, so you and I are on the same board. Also, I maybe want to get an update on the partnership that we're hopefully looking for with our Lacey Community Foundation. I know there's a big funding strategy going on. I know the city of Lacey is looking to possibly partner with the Community Foundation on helping meet some of those fundraising goals. I'm not sure if we're ready to talk about that.
So I have met with a representative from the Lacey Community Foundation, and we are looking at a scope of services that they could provide around a fundraising plan.
Okay. So hopefully that can be moved forward and get, be informed of this council at some point, and hopefully we can talk about that. John?
Yeah, just, I wanted to add that Shirley's son, John Jajic, is very active on our board. And he and Margie Wiley and Mr. John Turner and Paul Webb, and I think Nancy Miller, used to be Nancy Cunningham, so a famous name here.
Those are quite a few famous names right there.
Have produced a tremendous 16-page newsletter, which will be out next week. And one of the things they're making sure they're doing is they're adding a lot of names in articles, historical articles, about things that happened, putting a lot of people's family names in so that we can start to get people to recognize. I'm basically a newbie, even though I've been here since '72. That's like being a rookie in Lacey on the Historical Commission.
Yeah.
But I think a lot of our new current residents need to know about those families, and so they're doing a lot of storytelling. I hope you all get a chance to look at it, because some of you might even learn something as I did when I read it this morning. So look for the Lacey Historical Society newsletter.
And thank you for coming together and saving the Historic Society. That needs to be said right out here in public. You guys saved the Historic Society. I was really worried that, you know, what we see a lot of times is, you know, these nonprofits been around for a while, and they hit this point where at some point, leadership has to transfer, and if it doesn't, they go away. And that, we were at that with Historic Society, and there is real worry in this community that we were gonna lose the Lacey Historic Society, and that was gonna be devastating. And John stepped up along with the people that you just mentioned and saved it. And now look at what's going on. So thank you from me and let everyone in the Historic Society know, thank you so much for stepping up and doing that. It really means the world to me.
Will do. We were down to four people, and now we got a hard-charging group of at least 15.
Oh, that's awesome. Lanny?
I was gonna say, this is for you, Aaron. So you had shown some pictures, some of the old police station stuff, and, you know, obviously we have the new police station coming up. Councilmember Stedman and myself were approached by a couple of former police officers from way back, retired, about hoping that there would be some of those pictures, some of that history in the new police station. So I don't know if there's any plan for that, but just something.
I have not heard of any plan, but it has certainly crossed my mind that it's something that we should consider for the new police station building, and I'd love to be a part of that.
Is there any way we could go back to that slide? Is that too much to take?
As we do that, that as part of the project in the interior lobby, there will be some display on art and.
That's what they were, they were hoping for, that there would be in the lobby some, you know.
I have a lot more than that.
Some of the historic stuff.
Yeah. Everything would be determined, but that's part of the process of that final stage.
So I was just sent a text message to say that in front of City Hall, in the red car, is John Gibson, and then next to him is Chuck, Chief Chuck Naumann, and then Larry Savage is in that picture, I believe. And that's, that's just a tidbit I got in a text message when you guys popped that up.
Yeah.
They're very active in the, and they would be very willing to participate in the museum and anything to do with, you know.
Oh, nice.
History and PD.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I, you know, I love seeing those pictures, and I do want to make sure we're holding on to that history, and I think it's a good point to make sure that we have some of that in the, in the new police station. That's great.
Isn't the old Impala school driving around town?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is.
The Fly Fishing Company, right?
Yep.
Over by where Andy lives.
Over by the Pope John Paul High School, yeah.
Anything else from the council or anyone on the commission? Go ahead. Can you turn on your microphone, Ed? Oh, right there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, we, I've been doing these things since, I was thinking tonight when the first time I went to one of these, and it's 1967. So that'll give you some idea of, and I've been involved with county government all the way through and stuff. And in that time, I've never heard an attitude, and I, motions and stuff you guys made tonight were just fantastic. I was really impressed. I mean, I, I mean, that, you know, like I said, I've been to a lot of these meetings, and nothing even close to that has ever come up. And this, on this, by this last topic, the only other thing I can think of is the chief out of, chief out of Evergreen has got a whole bunch of pictures like that, too.
Great, Ed Soder. Yeah. Well, thank you. And thank you. I appreciate that as well. With that, can I get a motion?
I would move that we approve and adopt the 2024 Historical Mission work plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And all in favor of that motion, raise your hand, say aye. Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, it is 7:35. At 7:40, we will be meeting in an executive session to discuss the performance of a public employee as allowed by RCW 42-30-110-1G. Everyone's here. We will be meeting in the other room, and we'll be meeting for a half hour. Where, how long is it? So we'll be meeting until 8:10, and we might need to extend that. But so we're adjourning at 7:40 and meeting in the executive session for a half an hour.
So the council's extending the executive session for a period of fifteen.
It is eight twenty five and the regular meeting is called back to order. But we have reached the end of our agenda. So without objection, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacy.